In her absence, I would declare that you have a full call. Counselor, in your package was a minutes of the April the 6th meeting along with attachments. If you have had a chance to review those minutes, it was your pleasure. If not, take a moment to look them over again.
I make a motion to approve?
Motion to approve is a second.
Second.
Motion is second. Any additions, corrections to those minutes? Hearing none, all in favor of their acceptance, please signify by raised hand unanimous. This time we'll have the first reading of the Building and Construction Code ordinance. What we're doing is actually adding to the list of codes that we already are under. The International Property Maintenance Code is what we're adding. I will be asking for a motion to accept the first reading and a second, and then if there's any discussion, we will go into.
I make motion to accept.
Motion to accept. A second. Any discussions or questions reference to that ordinance addition?
Yeah, I've got, I've got some questions. What is, what is the addition? What does this mean, International Property Maintenance Code? And how's that different from what it was before?
Okay, if you look above, you'll see all the other eight, International Building Code, Lumbering Code, Fire Code, all the others. This is International Property Maintenance Code. We are putting in a code enforcement officer and a court system to take care of any violations. So, but the code enforcement officer is pretty much exempt unless we have adopted this property maintenance code. This would refer to existing buildings, houses, yards, structures, that type ordinance.
Okay, that we didn't have in there before? Like, are you talking about their grass is too high, they have untagged cars in their yard? Old washers and dryers, refrigerators?
Dilapidated house, houses in need of repair that maybe needs to have our property enforcement officer look at and evaluate and see what needs to be done.
So, does that specifically tell them what good is or what acceptable is? Is that what that does?
Yeah, this is, that's what this is the-
So, if you came to my house and said, "Your roof is in disrepair," that manual is going to tell me as a homeowner how it needs to be? Is that what it does?
No. First off, it would need to be visible from the street and a violation that needed to be addressed.
Okay.
If your roof had a hole in it, yeah, then that would fall under the category of coming to you and saying, "Look, you've got a violation. What can you do to correct it and how can we help?"
Okay.
Would that have to be a complaint from another citizen or?
It doesn't have to be. It could be, but it doesn't have to be. If we send the code enforcement officer out there and says, "Okay, do a clean sweep of the town," now this is hypothetical. And they come back and they said, "Okay, on such, such a street, you got such, such a violation visible from the street." And then we take it under consideration, what we need to do to it or what we need to do about it.
So, it still up to us?
Yeah.
Well, the reason I was asking was, say they came out and looked at my house and said, "Oh, we hadn't used that weatherhead in 40 years. The new weatherheads look like this and you need to rewire your house."
No, that, that would not fall under the maintenance code. Now, if, if something that was unsafe, say the steps were falling in, period business, that would be something that the code enforcement officer would see. This would give him teeth along with the court system. Say, say we ask that something be done to make the necessary repairs and the people just absolutely said, "No, I'm not going to do anything about it." Then we would have to draw up a violation, present it to the court, city's court, and take care of the problem.
To the homeowner first.
To the homeowner first. We go to the homeowner first.
Well, didn't, if I remember right, the old code that we had adopted actually pointed toward this in some cases, didn't it? Didn't it say that this, this-
The International Building Code touches on just about everything in here.
Okay.
Yeah, but this is, this is a little bit more explicit reference to property maintenance. And we've been told by the code enforcement people that without this, they don't have a whole lot of teeth.
Well, let me ask you this, since we're talking about redoing this and this is in first reading and such. Noise ordinance. I've had a complaint from a neighbor about noise ordinance.
We handle that just like you would any other, first called in here and let us know about it, let us know there was a problem. And at that point, we'll see what needs to be done. If it says a violation is immediate and that somebody is having a blasted party next door, that's when the police should be called in.
What if it's not a party? What if it's business, business noise?
I don't think any difference.
Well, the reason why I'm even asking is I have been, something has been said to me by somebody about the noise, but prior to last year, when we were having that commercial development going on and they're out there at 4:00 AM, that was a disturbance. I called the police and the police said they could do whatever they wanted to.
That, we've been through there a lot of times about where it was in reference to the commercial zone. So, you know, we really don't need to beat that horse again. But, and noise ordinances need to be reported if there's a violation regardless. Tell the police about it, tell me about it, tell Donna about it, let it be known that there's a problem.
And we, we wrote our own noise ordinance a few years back.
Yes, sir.
And we, we consulted with a few other towns on how many dB, 85 dB was, you know, whatever. We were way too strict and I think we did it because of the festival, the generators out there. And we backed off a little bit and got to where a car going down the road wouldn't upset it. Now, we, we talked to the sheriff and I think they have dB meters, don't they? They can, they have to stand so many feet back and listen to it.
Exactly.
And we could, we could file a complaint through our noise ordinance or something like that.
Right, and if it is a clear violation and it's something that continues, then that's when the, that's when the court system would kick in.
But does this specify for business and personal?
This one.
Our own noise ordinance-
Noise, the whole thing? Like, when you're talking about beating a dead horse, I'm not beating a dead horse, I'm just trying to get clarification.
Well-
If you have a business that is making too much noise-
Right.
And you have a complaint, where does it fall in this? Does it fall in this?
Well, it wouldn't fall into this one. It would fall into our noise ordinance.
So, that has nothing to do with this?
No, this is property maintenance code.
I'm talking about all of this, period, standard minimum, standard codes.
No, they would fall into our local noise ordinance, none of the building codes.
So, it wouldn't even be in this ordinance period? Would, noise is not covered under this?
No, that, this is, that is reference to building, if you read down all of them, you'll see Building Code, Electric Code, International Fuel.
I was just going to make sure that this wasn't somewhere that needed to be added to since we were already doing this.
That, that would be covered.
Wendell, may I ask a question because I'm confused now? This thing then is for only maintenance. Is it for commercial and residential or just one or just the other?
Both.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions reference to the first reading? We have a motion on floor for the acceptance of the first reading and a second. And no other discussion. All in favor of first reading acceptance, please signify by raised hand. So moved. Next is the annexation request by Ms. Arsula Keith, piece property on Highway 16. Ms. Arsula has owned that property for many, many, many years. She owned it way before Highway 16 was even there. At the time, it was owned by the family, the property went all the way over to the railroad right away. 16 came in, took a great portion of her property, then she gave the corner lot, the corner of Cold Street and 16 to the church for the, for the church facility. And part of her property is in the city, part of it is out. Our forefathers in their wisdom located our city limits on the two arcs. Even that was a mistake, as I understand, reading back on the history, it should have been one circle, like Turing, but it turned out to be two arcs. It has caused a problem with the tax digest, it's caused a problem with people having property half in, half out. On that street, there's already two other pieces of property that the back end went down into the county. It happened in, on McIntosh, happened twice as I know of, over before Highway. So, she is asking that the entire property be brought into the city. I will say that this is in the benefit, great benefit to us as a town to have that piece of property brought in to town. Without that piece being brought in, it hampers any other property across the street on the east side of 16 from ever becoming, coming into the city limits. It would even, if the property that is adjoining Turing at that same location would like to come into Turing, it can't happen because it would make an island, an unincorporated island out of Ms. Keith's property, which is a violation. We can't do that. So, she's asking that it be brought into the city. Is there a motion? Do we accept the first reading of the annexation ordinance?
I make a motion to accept it.
Motion to accept first reading is a second.
Second.
Motion is second. Now, is there any further discussion or questions, please?
Yeah, I've got some questions. So, what I'm understanding is she came to the town and asked to be brought completely in?
Nope.
She did not?
Truth is, I called Mr. Sill. I called her and asked her if she would have an interest in bringing it in. I explained to her why. That started probably three years ago, whatever. She's been in several occasions just to talk to us about other things. Then she brought her, one of her nephews in, then she brought the other nephew in. We explained the whole situation to all of them and that's when they decided that that's what they would like to do, yes.
All right, how is this benefiting her? I mean, isn't she going to be charged more taxes now because she'll be a complete city?
She'll have a little bit more tax on the, on the undeveloped property, but it is very miniscule compared to what we consider. As all the reports that we can find would show that the property in the city limits would be worth more to the family in the long run than that in the county, especially if it's surrounded by the city.
Wow.
Just the way it is.
It's going to be worth more if it's in the city versus not?
If it all is in the city versus part being in and part out.
Do you know why she didn't come tonight? I'd like to ask her some questions. Was she going to come, do you know?
No, no, she had no reason to come. I was going to present it here in the form of a question. Now, there may be questions that I can answer for you, or you can call Ms. Arsula before the second reading.
Do you, yeah, do you have her contact information?
I do, but I don't have her, we're going to have to-
Okay, I'll just get it. Are we charging her annexation fee?
No.
Why?
Because as I said, it's in the benefit of the city that we do this. And will I, can I show you on the map up here what I'm talking about?
Why do we have annexation fees?
Because some of these people, they own large pieces of property, commercial especially, that's why we charge the fees.
Okay. I don't think I have any other questions.
Any other questions from other counsel?
If, I get what Selena said about it, why would it benefit her? If they, if they, if that church ever sold to someone else, wouldn't that look better if it was all within the city limits or all within the county as opposed to half of the property, one and half the other?
All one way or the other would make a whole lot more sense, in part being in and part out, especially with a arc that divides the two pieces. Anything that they decide to do, say they decide to sell it for commercial, it would be a nightmare to go out and do the surveying and so forth, to determine what part is in the city, what's in the county. If the part that was split in the line was commercial and somebody was going to put a business there, where are they going to get the business license from the county, from the city? Are they going to do both? But it simplifies things for their family so much to have it one way or the other.
Well, how did you approach her with saying that it would benefit her? Or did you just want to just talk help her?
Well, does she have intent to sell it?
Ms. Arsula is getting up in age and she will be giving that property to her nephews and maybe children and she probably thinks that that's probably what will happen at some point. Some point down the road, somebody is going to sell the property.
So, the church that's on the little corner up here, is that on her property or she deeded that to the town? So, if the church sells, that has nothing to do with the remainder of the lot?
No, ma'am.
So, that doesn't have anything to do with the key? The church sells, they're already in the town?
Right.
So, it wouldn't matter to them?
No, it doesn't matter to them.
I just wanted to know what her plans were and why she wanted it to annex, annex in.
Well, I said it, after you explained to her and we explained to her as best we could, like we just talked about, and both she and being, being an older lady, she wanted to have one of, both of her younger nephews in so that they fully understood what we were talking about. And so, based on that, all three made the decision, that's what they wanted to do.
Well, you saying the church deeded property only goes to the semicircle?
No, no.
It's the whole lot?
No, no, this is, this is Arsula's lot here. She deeded this corner off of the church many years ago. All the rest of it. See the conflict here?
Right.
In fact, there was even further conflict in that the bottom part of that property is showing on the county digest as belonging to another landowner. And it's not, it all belongs to Ms. Arsula. We went back to records for many, many years to come up with the original flat that went all the way over to the railroad. Any other discussion?
You know, we went over this, of course, we lost a few pieces, you know, over there around the high school because of the arc. And Tony, you've been on the council there long enough to, you know, everybody looks for the pin in Turing and in Sharpsburg for how, how we came up with the arcs. And the circles do cause a lot of problems in some, in some, in some land. I mean, and y'all run into it too. We run into it over there in the subdivision because part of a house is in or one quarter of the house, the house is not even in the city. But they got garbage service from us because they have part of their properties in our, in our city. You know, I've always, you know, ever since I've been on the council and talked to Wendell, trying to clean up these, just getting these, some of these are just not even a tenth of an acre that are out. But the county came and cleaned up and said, "Okay," they took some of them back, we held just a little bit of them, they took it away from us. So, it's not even as clean over on the other side as it used to be. They're trying to follow the, the maps.
Wellsburg Station has still got split property over there because the arc goes right through the first street in Wellsburg Station. So, this is in part effort to help clean up all these, all these arcs. I wish we had them all cleaned up, it sure would make it easier in the future for people following behind us. Any other discussion? All in favor of this first reading acceptance, please signify by raised hand. Three, four, and those opposed, same side? One against. The second would be pertaining to the zoning of that same property. It's not a change of zoning, but simple, as simply an additional zoning in that it has not been in the city and the city is wishing to annex it. The homeowners, the landowner. So, this would be zoning to be parallel or compatible with the existing county zoning that the property now sits. So, there won't be a change of zoning, it will be a parallel to what we have that correlates with the county zoning. A motion to accept the first reading would be in order and a second, and then we'll go into discussion. Motion is a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion or questions reference to that, please? Hearing none, all in favor of the acceptance of the zoning, please signify by raised hand. Opposed, same side? Mr. Bridges, you're on the agenda tonight. If you would, you have the podium, sir.
Awesome, thank you all. I, I was just wanting to get, and I'm glad to see the Turing folks are here too, trying to get more clarification on the development of our Wood Commons and just kind of be more transparent. I called Clay and, and just said, "Look, you know, this sort of took a lot of people off guard." You know, that there seemed to be a lot of back-to-door deals being, being had at the time because it seemed as if Turing folks were counting on you guys in Sharpsburg to provide, you know, the sewer system. Because otherwise, how would, you know, how would they be able to accommodate two houses per acre? There's no way to do that with the soil.
No, so the sewer system has not come into play here at all.
So, Sharpsburg has no, no intentions of doing a sewer system to provide for that neighborhood?
No, we, we have no, no idea that we would be providing a sewer system for them. Where did you come up with that, sir?
Mr. Crumpleton, right here. The developer will design, higher end utilities designed to decentralize sewer system.
You're telling me it's going to be in Sharpsburg though?
That's up to the developer and unit utilities in the state of Georgia.
Have been designed, yes, sir.
But you guys in Sharpsburg would have to be involved, correct?
Only to the part that it would be affected by that portion that's in Sharpsburg.
Okay, um, so you don't, you don't really don't have anything to do with it?
No.
No? Okay.
We may at some point.
You know, we might, somewhere down the road, but we don't know the design of it yet.
Okay, well, you know, that's what I was asking Clay, just to be a little more transparent and be a little more upfront because that, that was the impression that I got from Turing, was that Sharpsburg was going to be providing that and Mr. Crumpleton said that there was going to be contingencies for that. Now, you can, I mean, I don't mean to put everybody on the spot, but you're here and that's, you asked me where I got that information and that's, that's where I got that information.
Was that in reference to the field mines, that they might come on this side or?
Well, in the conceptual plan, October 2014, Briarwood Commons, I think Wendell probably has plenty of copies of it, it shows that Sharpsburg will have the drain line, drain fields on the Chambles property. And that was involved in the original process of Turing rezoning to a high-density zoning. And there's no way that you can put two houses per acre without a septic tank, I mean, without a sewer system. You can't put a septic tank on there. And they went ahead and rezoned that with what I assumed in, in talking to them, Mr. Crumpleton, was that Sharpsburg was going to provide a sewer system and it was in fact on the conceptual plan by Dennis Striker, or Drew, or whatever his name is. So, and it was also implied that the Chambles people, Leroy Johnson's family, was in, in, involved and in favor of this.
No, no.
And in fact, it was not because they actually wrote a letter to the Turing folks the day of to say, "We're not involved in this. We don't have any idea what you're trying to do. We did allow them to do soil tests, but we don't have any contract. We don't have any plans. We don't have any intentions of doing what was on that conceptual plan." But I think it was a little unfair and it implied, in fact, what Mr. Crumpleton told me, Sharpsburg was going to have the sewer system. I mean, it's on, it's on that conceptual plan. I'd be glad to show it to you if Wendell does not decide to show it to you.
Here it is, right here.
We'll show it, show it to Keith. That's, that's where I'm getting my information.
I'm sorry about the sewer system on here, I'm sorry.
So, what are drain fields? What are, what are drain fields? Unless you've got a different, different, um, what does that say right there?
That is proposed that there's a possibility, first off, Shambles has not agreed to it. The letter that was read that night stated that they are not a party to it. They did let it, they did-
What does that say right there? Drain field or can you not read that?
Drain field.
Okay.
Right.
There you go.
But this is a concept plan.
All right. So, you answered my question.
It has not been decided by the Shambles, by the developer, and certainly not by the county, state, or the-
So, what are you saying? You, you, Sharpsburg, you know, never, you never saw that before?
Oh, yes.
Okay, and so you're telling me that Sharpsburg had, so based on that plan, you obviously agreed or said, maybe had some conversation with Dennis Striker to say, "This, this is, this is something that looks good on a conceptual plan. We think we can make this happen."
The way the drain field is, is pretty much immaterial. If, as long as it will perk and as long as the residents approve of it.
But it's going to be a decentralized septic system, which is in fact a contained sewer system for, everybody will be putting their poop on that drain field, correct? From the Turing, the Turing side and, and for the Sharpsburg side. Is that, is that, is that correct? That's correct.
Joe.
We have the same system with the Oaks.
I understand that.
Unit utilities operate it. The developer paid for it, put it in. It meets county approval, it meets state approval, but that's on down the road, Joe. The developer has got to come back now with a site plan and we have to approve that. And then the sewer system is on down the road, but it has to be approved by the county and the state EPA.
I certainly understand that. All I'm asking is that Sharpsburg was involved in the sewer system and he's telling me, "No, no, no." And then you look on there and it is, in fact, was in the plan, so for that-
We were not involved and are not involved with the sewer system. Now, there has been discussion about, okay, will that perk? Will it be going across 16? Will that perk? Also, if you listened at that meeting, you heard Dennis say that there's a possibility that the 12 Parks Sewer Plant will be in production. This will be diverted to that system.
And also the county, correct? That has nothing to do with Turing or, or Sharpsburg. That's, that would have to get approved from the county.
That's correct.
So, you would have to have an intergovernmental agreement with the county because right now, the county will not allow Turing or Sharpsburg to tap into the sewer system.
No, but under the state, under the state allocation, under the state allocations, we have already been designated a certain portion of that plant if it ever comes online by the state. So, yes, we would be involved in it, but it will-
I'd like to see that in writing. That would be, that would be very interesting to see.
It does belong to the county.
It does not belong to the county?
It does belong to the county. It is a county system.
And they have jurisdiction and everything as far as density and what goes in there, correct?
No, no.
So, where, where is this land going to be? Is the land going to be in Sharpsburg? Is it going to be in Turing?
What land?
That's going, that's going to be pumping their poop to this plant.
I'm sorry, I still don't understand your question.
What I understood from unit utilities at one point in time when I was having the discussion because a resident, not of Sharpsburg or of Turing, but of the county complained of the smell from the oats and that's a good four miles from that person's house. So, I called to get information on it and I had, I talked to them and I said, "In terms of you designing the system, when does that happen?" And they said, "Not until all the zoning issues have been taken care of, at which point in time the developer brings to us the conceptual plan, which is nothing more than you and I drawing out something of what we envision it to look like, but it doesn't make it factual that it's going to look like that. It's a conceptual plan." And they said they would have to look at it. They would go out there and do more soil sampling, more tapping, all that kind of stuff before they could even decide where- more tapping, all that kind of stuff, before they could even decide where the decentralized system was going to be. That's what I understood.
Joe, at the meeting, just to be clear on another item, Mr., where you might stand on this issue, whether you're for or against, or whatever, because you stood up on both sides the other night, so it kinda confused me a little bit. Uh, do you not want this development, do you want this development? Uh, what is your, what, I don't know where you're coming from.
I think, I think I was pretty clear, I am against uncertainty and unanswered questions, and that's what I get here, and that's what I get there. So, I'm against, I'm not against development, I'm not against growth. I'm against uncertainty when people are involved that can't answer simple questions. That's what I'm against.
It will never happen, it will never happen unless it meets all codes, regardless of whether they put their fluid, regardless of what kind of sewer system they use. So, it's not even an issue at this point, those things have to clear before it happens.
But you guys can't be clear on your involvement in it. We get, we get an article in the newspaper that says you're, you're welcoming this, and you're ready to go, and Turin's making decisions based, without having the infrastructures to support the zoning. That's been my argument all along, I just wanna know how this is...
Just, I don't know if this will help or not, but the sewer, the system, wherever it ends up, whether it's in Turin, Sharpsburg, or whatever, each city really won't have much involvement in that. That will be up to the developer to figure out, to get with the EPA and the county, and all of them will have to agree as the best location to meet, for it to work properly and, and meet everybody's needs. So, and the Sharpsburg or Turin will never own it, will never have anything to do with it, other than it might just happen to reside inside their limits. It will totally be Union Utilities design and manage facility, they will run it, they will get all the money from it, there will be no revenue from, to either city. It's just there to support this development that this guy is gonna put in there, and it's his baby to make it work, not the town's.
So, you're telling me you guys don't want any tax fees, you don't want any kind of franchise tax?
I mean, this is somebody else's pay for all this stuff, not us.
Not our system, we can't collect on it.
It's not ours.
Okay, that's, uh, it's a little bit different than Brooks', you know, I mean, they had, they must have some sort of...
I think the town, it was their own system, yeah.
What's that?
Didn't the town, if Brooks put their own system, "We're not doing it, the developers totally do it this on its own."
That's what I was thinking, I'm just trying to get y'all to be more transparent and help, help the citizens and residents and taxpayers understand what's going on.
So, if this system, whenever or wherever it lands, this decentralized system fails at some point in the future, who pays for that?
That was my question. I was just curious.
You hear, you hear what Mr. Crumpleton said?
Union Utilities.
They bear all costs and expenses, and who do they pass that on to?
It's their problem, they collect the money, they own it, they gotta fix it.
They own the one oak.
Developer pays for it, and then he gives it to Union Utilities to manage and run and take...
Why in the world would they want that?
'Cause they can't build a development.
That's the biggest mistake, right?
They make money on it.
And Utilities makes money off of that service.
Money and trash and then waste. The developer has to pay over a hundred thousand dollars for the, just the design plans, and then he has to pay all the costs for the infrastructure, going in, water, streets, sewer, power, the developer has to pay all that.
Joe, do you have anything else that would make me more transparent about, sir?
Yeah, I mean, you know, that was, that was, what I was kinda leading to in that other meeting was, okay, if you've got, if this developer has all this other land that we're on sixteen, and you're gonna, all of a sudden now, you're gonna, instead of, you can't use the Chambles property, so now you're gonna use that property, which really doesn't perk either, how are you gonna do it, and why is it that you didn't just go ahead and develop that land first? Because now you're gonna have the cost of going under railroad tracks and under two state highways.
You're asking the wrong people to talk to the developer, not me.
Yeah, well, I mean, you guys are involved, because you annexed the property over there to allow them to have the higher density and have the, you've got the jurisdiction over it.
We annexed the property, period.
That's right.
Now, they come back later and tell us what they're gonna do with it, that's immaterial.
But that's, that's what I was saying, that's why I asked that question over there, and I, and I don't get real, any answers from them, and so I'm assuming that since it's now gonna be coming into Sharpsburg, you guys will be involved, because Clearwater Lake got very involved the last time and actually stopped that whole development.
No, sir.
They did not, they had nothing to do with it?
No.
No?
If you're...
Clearwater Lake had nothing to do with that?
Clearwater Lake came here, and Dennis McIntyre stood right here, and he explained to those people how good the system was, and even the people from Clearwater Lake had no objections after that. It won't affect Clearwater Lake.
Who, who, who within Clearwater Lake had no objections? Gillespie, Al Suel?
Al Suel was there, Gillespie was there.
He had no, Al Suel and, and Mr. Gillespie had no objections?
They had initial objections, after Dennis McIntyre explained the system to them. To my knowledge, they had no objections.
How, where's your knowledge come from?
From being here and listening to it.
I recall that meeting, and they were very upset.
At the beginning?
They were upset when they left Wendell. I thanked the crowd for coming, I was actually kinda pleased with the turnout, and I don't recall who it was that stood up and said, whatever it was she wanted to say, her, her say, and she's entitled to do that.
Right.
Um, but it was still negative about the whole ordeal, so I do recall people down near that lake being upset. They were concerned about overflow into their lake, they were concerned about the smell, they were concerned about a lot of things.
Right, and all those questions were answered if they cared to listen.
Well, but you understand, this is where, their place of living, this is their home.
I understand.
And regardless of what politicians say and comes out of our mouth, doesn't necessarily make them a believer in that, is what I'm saying. So, that, I feel like those residents left with the same concerns they came in here with, from my recollection. I don't know, Polly, do you have it on tape?
No.
Oh.
I have the newspaper article that followed it immediately, in fact, as I ran across it yesterday.
I, I remember them being a large, even Mr. Johnson was here, and he spoke. I do remember that too, and I do remember a lot of the residents being very upset about it, very concerned about their quality of life changing in that area.
I was at that meeting too, and I remember, but it was the, my, my consensus was, was the overall development, as a whole, they did not want, um, it was, there was major concern about turning into the development from the highway, Highway sixteen as it was then. Um, and there was also development, uh, issues about just the type of housing and, and the commercial part of it on the front, and that kind of thing. And yes, there was concern about Clearwater Lake, and I do believe it explained how the sewer system worked. But we've explained how our sewer system works in the Oaks as well, and a lot of times it's what people choose to believe, because I live in the Oaks, and it does work, we've not had any problems, and I've got data from Union Utilities, based upon the allegations that were made, that it's, it's a good system, and the only complaints we've had is one for aroma, and they came out and fixed it, and then there was one for, um, some grease and things like that, which they give us pamphlets saying, "Don't throw this down," you know? Everybody knows you should not throw grease down a drain trap. And they, they were out there probably two or three times a month checking it, and we haven't had a system fail, so...
But this is the same kind of system that sits behind Kroger up at Thomas Crossroads?
No, no.
No.
No, it's not the same kind?
No, it's the same one that sits behind the Publix, but the one behind Kroger was an antiquated system that did fail, and then they had to come in and try to clean it up over many years, no matter what, it's not the same.
Now, the system that they, that, it's a sort of hybrid of what's in the Oaks, the one that I would imagine for this one, Union's, is similar to the one that I flew out and looked at in Arkansas.
Correct.
I would love to have that system in Sharpsburg. If it's done correctly, there, I mean, I toured the whole thing. Uh, the only thing that's pumped is the affluent after it's been treated, and it's usually done on a drip system, um, they can do a spray. It's never the smell, it's just the same, it's just, just like the septic tank in front of your house, the tank is in your front yard, just the liquid is pumped off to be, it's, it's pumped into tanks, uh, somewhere, and it, and it has a screen filter, it filters it out, and when it comes out the other side, it's just as clear as what they, as what they've put in the pond and spray out over at Cowan County.
Well, and, and not to mention, um, I don't know, I'm this, I'm a visitor here, it's not my ballgame, but, um, Lynch Road has got two new developments going up over there too. And I don't think there's public sewer that runs down Lynch Road at this point in time. So, somewhere along the line, there's gonna have to be some more decentralized systems put in somewhere. I don't know that they're going to be, I don't know that, I have not explored that. But there's two new developments going in over there, and they've already cleared ground on sixteen up next to the new Leroy Johnson Park for another development up there. Now, that is closer geographically to the planned sewer treatment plant back on whatever the street is, road is. But that doesn't mean that they're all gonna mesh together at the same time. I don't know.
Uh, we took Mr. Herbert Bridges down to Augusta to see a system down there that takes care of the entire base, army base, and, uh, we went in and looked at it, they opened the tanks, and Mr. Bridges saw for himself that it was a very good system, and came back here and, uh, and at that point, had no objections to it, to us. Mr. Bridges, you have something else, or?
Oh, yeah, I was gonna ask Mr. Cindy here, so you, you were okay with the, with that development over there that was going in on the side over here?
On Briarwood?
The, the hall.
I was concerned about what they were gonna do with the traffic pattern.
So, you were concerned with that development?
I was concerned with the traffic pattern, I was not concerned with anything else.
Okay.
You gotta remember, I was not born and raised around here. I've seen...
I've, uh, I've got another question, uh, or two here on the, so, so this annexation and rezoning of Keith's property, it doesn't have anything to do with developers, Oak Hall, Briarwood, anything? Has nothing to do with any of that?
No, sir, it does not.
Okay. Um, and, uh, you don't know her, I mean, you kinda stated a little bit of her plans, you don't really know what the deal was?
No, there, there is, when you're talking with a lady of my age, her age, no, uh, nothing was said definite that, "I'm going to will this to this or that," no. It's just that we all know that at some point, that property is going to go to heirs. But, no, and the heirs were happy with the situation.
Does she, does she know she's gonna have to pay more taxes?
Yes.
You, you, you made that clear to her?
Yes.
And that city and county taxes, two, two taxes basically, she, she knows that, I mean, I, you know...
She's already got that city bill coming in on the front part of the property, so it's only, on the back part of the property with a lower appraisal, at this time, it's not gonna be that much, and she knows about it.
But you discussed that with her?
Yes, I did.
And she knows.
Has she even given a county tax on the back, being that you said it was in somebody else's name?
Uh, I have no idea who was paying on that bottom part.
Are you sure you don't have any idea who's paying on that part?
I, I didn't say I didn't know.
Good God.
Mr. Bridges?
Hand him the map.
I can tell you, I can tell you whose name it was in, I cannot tell you who was paying taxes on it.
Joe, this is what the tax thing said?
I know what it said. I mean, I know exactly who, what, everything.
Did you, did you know for sure that that was being paid by the other party, or was she paying it? Do you know that?
I do not know that.
I do not know.
Nobody paid, eh?
So, she hasn't been receiving a tax bill herself on this other two and a half acres?
We just said we don't know.
Oh, my Lord, okay.
Did you, did you, did you explain that with potential for, so that, so, yeah, to be going up?
She, she thought it was very nice that that property that we're showing on the tax digest as not being hers had been clarified.
Who, who clarified that, with her?
We did, the city did.
Did, was it clarified based off this, this map, which says it's dated April twenty-third fifteen, like a new, the survey, who did the survey?
Christopher Brooks.
Who paid for it?
I do not know.
Did Ms. Ursula pay for it?
I doubt it, I, we probably paid for it, I don't know.
Who was "we"?
The city, the town.
Why?
How do you know whether you paid, you don't, you don't know what you paid for it or not?
I just don't know.
Why would we have paid for a plat to annex in somebody else's property?
In the very beginning, what I said was, it was, the annexation of this property is very vital to the future growth.
That should have been approved through this council. That should have been approved through this council. That should not have been done without our approval.
So, the mayor and Clay don't have that flexibility?
No, I do not think so. That really raises questions with me, a lot. How much was this?
I just got through to you, you know.
That's why we should have the clerk here.
That she wouldn't have it right here, would she?
Well, maybe I need to call Christopher, then...
I'm gonna go in and find out and let you know.
Wendell, nobody's gonna come and plat my property and pay for that bill for me unless they're wanting something from it. Really?
We wanted something for me, I'm telling you, it was for the benefit of the city.
That shouldn't have been done, that was wrong, that should not have been done.
We're not supposed to act in the best interest of the city.
I guess we should reevaluate how much power that you and the clerk have to approve things without the council knowing.
I would agree with that, that's my, that's where you feel about it.
I do feel that way, that's, that's taxpayers' money. That's my money, your money, Keith's money, Derek's money, Clay's money, that is...
We make decisions all the time.
No, Wendell.
We make decisions all the time.
We talk about how much it's gonna cost to, to repaint the outside of this building and get approval in a meeting.
Yes.
Yes, that's how, the little things we talk about together as a council and mayor that we get approval on is, is how much it's gonna cost to restain the outside of the building every year.
I might wanna change the, uh, the regulations reference to how much the mayor and city... That's our city charter, and it's written up that we, we have a strong mayor, right? Right, up to ten thousand dollars without getting approval from anybody. Now, if you wish to change that, bring it up and change it. That's, that's right, we have to change our charter.
That's a budget issue.
No, it's not a budget issue. No.
Is it in the budget?
Our charter states...
It's already in the budget, ten thousand dollars?
Our charter states that Wendell is a strong mayor, and he can act on behalf of us without us being present to vote on it, up to a certain amount, you think it's ten thousand?
Then why do we approve something, bring it before council for vote and not others? We need to be consistent as a council, then.
No, you can't be consistent on those items, if it's something that pertains to, like the building, I want everybody's opinion in on it, we tried to get everybody's opinion on it. I don't understand where you're coming from, I know that you have a problem right now with the mayor because of something that happened in the past. I ask you, for the benefit of this town, for the long haul, we should be able to walk through these things and not have this debate.
That's where transparency comes in, in my opinion, I mean, that's kinda why, that's, that's the whole premise that you call it Clay, start, you know, you don't have, I mean, I'll throw something out, a little fuel on the fire, how much is the legal fees involved in all this annexation, what's all that costing the town?
Very little.
Very little, what, what would that figure be?
I do not have that figure, sir.
Okay.
If you wish to have it, you can call here later and I'll give it to you.
Public information question, sure. Okay, just a couple more questions, and I'll, I will, I will rest, um...
I want to say something, I noticed on that property annexation, there were three or four places marked where it said "stop found." And when the, the metal stop is found, they don't have to, uh, they, all they gotta do is mark it. It's already done, it's in the plat book somewhere, they don't have to come back out and, and do the whole thing over again. I had them do my property, and it was extremely cheap, it was like a hundred dollars.
How much?
Like a hundred dollars to redo my lot, and my lot was off, my lot was off a lot, and they did it with a metal detector.
And they found all four pins?
They found three of them, and, and the footage from the plat book to, to come up with the third, so...
And along those lines, he didn't have to lose, leave his office to write this up, because all four pieces of property on all sides had been surveyed. Right into his office, all he had to do was write it up, the charge was like miniscule.
Okay, well, that's, that's fine, as long as, as long as we're transparent, and you, you, you provide that, we'll see.
Well, I'm, I'm tired of hearing the word transparency. You act, you act like we're doing something that we're gonna benefit from, or that we're trying to pull one over on you, and we're not.
That's, that's...
I don't understand why you keep using the word transparency. I think you should retract that word.
I don't think I will.
Well, I don't wanna hear it again.
Uh, transparency's gonna come out of my mouth any time I want.
That's not, Joe, you got another question? Joe, do you have another question?
He asks for all the, and he speaks about sunshine, he talks about that, that's, that's transparency.
Right.
That's what it is.
Go ahead, no question.
Alright, couple questions, alright. Can I see the plat where, where, you said you researched and found the plat where the old Campbell property went all the way to the railroad tracks? I'd love to see that.
The Keith property?
Yes, it was formerly the Campbell property. May I, may I see a copy, may I have a copy of that?
Uh, yeah, I'll fill this, uh, put in all the records quick, Donna's on vacation two weeks. She'll get a file once she gets back.
And this, and this is how old, how old is this plat? And this, and this is how old, how old is this plat?
I don't know, it goes way back many years, before sixteen.
Before, how old is this, okay. Also, okay, and Miss, you said Ms. Keith came in several times on some other, other issues. What, what else was she coming up here for?
Couple of times Ms. Keith has dropped in. She's pretty much of a historian, and knows about the bottom of property and then around, and it's nice just to get to talk to her.
What, what were, what were her nephew's names that came up here, or whatever, with you, with her, do you know?
I have them in the office, one named Robert, but I don't know, but I wouldn't look at them.
Okay, just curious. And then, you, I think you kinda clarified this, specific problems with the tax assessor's office, that was part of the reason for, you know, doing all this. What, what, what exactly, specific problems? Is that just, just Clay's issue?
The bottom part of their property was belonged to someone that had property next to it.
Right.
Don't I, the tax records, if you'll look, there's many arrows with it, that was one. I don't know how they ever came up with that in the first place. Clay doesn't know either.
Yeah, I mean, Clay and I talked about it, and I must, you know, that's an attorney deal. One thing Derek mentioned too, you know, in, in annexation and trying to clean up, and, you know, everybody's cleaning up. Why don't, why don't the town try to clean up Wellsburg Station? You got a great, valid point there, why not annex, you know, people's half yards and quarter yards and all that, why not do that?
We probably, we probably have citizens saying we weren't being transparent. Anytime we try and move like that...
You don't like that word, though, right?
No, I don't like you using it, accusing us, I sure don't.
No.
You can't, you get down to where transparency, you're saying, you guys are covering up what you're doing. Then, then you have to ask, why would they do that? What is Mayor Staley getting out of the town paying whatever it costs, a hundred dollars, two hundred dollars, for this lady to drop her plat off so that we could annex it in there? What would he get out of that? He's not in real estate, he's not gonna get any kickback.
Would you like to take a wager that it costs more than two hundred dollars?
No, I, I think you're gonna get out of order if you keep it up.
I'm just, I'm just, you know, you're being sarcastic, I'll, I'll play that game. Also...
And to answer your question, Joe, I'll ask you, on, on the Wellsburg.
Yep.
You know, that, we were hoping, I talked to the county when I was mayor, about, you know, hey, these are so small, can we just, they could just say, okay, we're gonna give it, they can do that. That's what they did up there. They, they took some out and gave us some around the, the high school. They took the corner away and, and gave us a little bit on the other one, and to annex a small piece, they could change and give it to us, and we asked them to do that, so we wouldn't have to go to the, to the hearings and everything.
But that's the county's land, though, correct? That's not, not another, another landowner?
No.
That was the county's land?
That was the county, some, no, some of that was private owners, wasn't it?
So they had to go through the annexation process?
No.
How, how does the county have any right to tell a property owner that he needs to give this land to Sharpsburg?
It's only for the benefit of the tax digest.
It was to clean up the tax, that's all it was. I mean, this was a big swath of land, I'm not talking about acres, we're talking, you know, the bathroom, side of the bathroom. They were cleaning up the squares, 'cause you were, you were chopping off the little corners. I guess it's, it's maintenance, you don't have to generate two tax, I mean, that's probably what it was for. But, yeah, they cleaned that area up there around the high school, that's what they cleaned up.
Wellsburg Station is a good example, if you were to annex, say, all of Wellsburg Station, you know that you have to go contiguous, contiguous, right down the line, can you imagine? But, you can go in there under the sixty-five percent rule, go in and get everybody in there in one group, more than sixty-five percent, and more than sixty-five percent of the landmass, and you can do it by legislation, but...
Even in domain?
Yeah, we're not gonna, we're not gonna do that. If they wanna come in, and they're contiguous, we'll talk to them, just like Ms. Keith.
Wait a minute, did you say even in domain?
I mean, we had some, we had some, with, with Wellsburg, we had something off of Wellsburg, you know, and, and take it off the county, 'cause we were ending up with money to, you know, once we paved all our streets, you know, we can repay them a hundred times. But Wellsburg, you know, that was one of the, the, the throwbacks to the county, look, 'cause we, we could pave these roads with our money. The county, you know, we're paying the county to pave them, instead of them having to come in, because we could pave it more often than the county would. There was just some benefits, and we were talking with the county, you know, hey, you know, would you object if we tried? And we were not gonna do anything unless they got on board.
So where's the money for paving coming from, though?
From SPOST and, and stuff that we have, you know, we, I can pave every road in here, that's what we, you know, when we repaved, uh, Tarrenton, and when we repaid, uh...
That was, that was, that was SPOST funds?
Is the SPOST that comes?
It's SPOST, and it's a small state grant, but only pays about five thousand dollars, but we apply for it to be used for streets and roads. So we get every penny we can from places like that.
State only paid five grand to pay Tarrenton?
No, no, no.
What'd you just say?
That was just, no, no, I said that was just a small grant, a small portion, the rest of it was SPOST funds. We designate a certain portion, as we explained to you before, of SPOST funds, when we have the SPOST fund designation early on, as to how much we're going to put for streets and roads, recreation and so forth. So we have money for streets and roads.
I just, I just don't recall Tarrenton being paid with SPOST funds, I don't, when was it paid? I can't even remember.
It's been about five years, six years, seven years, about seven years ago, six years, so.
All right, well, you know, you answered most of my questions, but, you know, and I'm, I won't say Keith's unfavorite word, but as far as sunshine, you know, that's, that's, Wendell says it all the time, and wants to, you know, keep that. I still have issues with sewer systems and stuff where we're not really being informed, because that is a hot button. A house is not, somebody building a house on somebody's land usually does not generate any kind of hoopla. I mean, when you start talking to big sewer system, that's when people get upset, that's when Clearwater gets upset. And so, I, it was implied, I don't know, I guess he got a little nervous, I was gonna ask you more questions, but, he told me that it was Sharpsburg's deal on the sewer, that's how they were gonna make this happen. And that's what he told me, okay? And that's what's on that conceptual plan. And I, you know, I'm just asking you, I mean, you, you don't, you have, you've had no discussions with anybody in the town, no property owners about sewer, sewer system, septic, decentralized?
Talked about sewer system with developers all the time, not just this developer, any developer. We talked to the people at Twelve Oaks, we talked to the county, yes, we've had many conversations about the sewer system.
I'm just talking about property owners, 'cause that's like the Chancellors, those are property owners, those are not developers. I'm talking about Clay's land, or, or, you know, whatever, you're not having discussions about it. That's, 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 that's what I wanna see the sunshine on.
I have not talked to the Chancellors about it, I think the developer has, but I have not.
I'm talking about anybody.
Any, I still don't understand what you mean.
What's, what's, what's not to understand about anybody?
Anybody what?
In Sharpsburg.
About sewer?
Yes. Sewer septic, decentralized, poop, waste.
I talked to your dad for instance, has leaked about a decentralized.
It's been going a year and a half, and this really doesn't have anything to do with him.
Well, I said you asked me, had I had any discussions, and I said...
That is relevant to Oak Hall, the Thompson Lewis, and those guys. That's all I'm asking.
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine.
I'm to the developer about a lot of things.
Thank you for your time.
Joe, what is your main objective in coming to these meetings? Is it to...
Just to figure out what's going on with the town, to figure out what's going on with my property?
Could a lot of this be handled by a simple phone call?
Please do not ask me to come in. Please do not do that.
How about a phone call? Say, Wendell, I have a question about so-and-so, could you help me with it? I'm more than glad to help you. It seems like you want to grandstand in front of everybody, it seems like, what's going on? Call me, ask me questions, I'll be glad to...
I ask you questions in public, 'cause you're a public official. Ask you questions out here, so everybody is sunshine, Keith. That's, that's why. I don't, I don't, I don't wanna discuss things in, in the dark.
Why, why can't we work together from here on out for the benefit of the town?
That's a good question, you need to ask yourself that.
I'm asking you that. I'm willing to work with you if you'll work with me.
I can tell you, none of this that you're doing right here is working with me.
Well, I can say, from what I understand about Robert's rules of order, you are out of order when you wanna discuss this. We have other venues for discussing these issues, you're supposed to get three minutes to make comments. You're not supposed to ask me a question and try and corner me and accuse me of being non-transparent.
What does it say?
Says I'm on the agenda.
I see that, so is Polly, so am I.
No, I'm not, but I have a comment later.
Well, that's your only agenda, then. Just because your name's here, it doesn't say questions and answers. Am I wrong?
What, what is, what is, what is this forum, what is this forum for?
It's not a forum.
We're here to run ci- city business.
Not here to hold you accountable to...
When you ask, when you ask to be on the agenda, you can come up and you can make all the statements you want. It shouldn't be a question and answers session, sorry.
Well, you probably should've said that about forty-five minutes ago.
I am holding out olive branch to you to work with you in the future, Joe, and I wish you would take it.
I'll take, I'll take anything, you know, within a group effort, that you will offer, certainly.
I'm offering.
Okay, let's have a work session, let's do some other things. I mean, the last time we had a work session, it was, it was a grilling, it was, errant code official running amok.
Your opinions, sir.
My opinion, the guy got fired.
Not because of that, he wasn't fired. Go ahead, you can laugh if you want, Joe, but I'm offering to work with you in the town, on downtown, we could get some things done if we didn't...
Tell me how this Prop International Property May, I know where you're going with this, but tell me how, you tell me how it's, it's gonna benefit the town. It's already, it's already in the international billing codes, it's already in there. You're not doing anything but grandstanding in this whole thing anyway. I mean, that's, it's already in there.
Why do you have to be so offensive?
I just, you know...
Why do you have to try to hurt someone?
Can we move, um, with this? What's the next, what's the next thing to be done here?
I'll say one more thing about it.
Sure.
One of the reasons that we're adopting this is because we're going with a new company that will do enforcement. Wendell and I went last, was it last week, or week before last? And he came and got me and said, I want you, in case, I need somebody there as a witness. We should not be going around and trying to enforce code. And that's one of the reasons we're, we're moving over to this company, and we're adopting IPMC.
We've had citizens ask us, why don't we have an, uh, pumping enforcement officer? And we tried to, but the last company was too expensive, we couldn't afford it, we found a company that is affordable, and that's who we're going with.
What, what about, how much is a, is a court system gonna cost the taxpayers?
Only as needed, only as needed, and the people that are in violation are the ones that pay it anyway.
They pay for everything.
Well, if they're found guilty, they pay the charges, in fact, the city can actually make money on it. Public comments?
Nothing, sure.
Is that like a circuit court?
Uh, it would be like a municipal court. And we can't afford to have our own and have someone qualified to do it on hand at all times, and go through all the qualification. So we've making a, a deal with one of the county judges to work through the county and work on as-needed basis, so that we might not need it for a year, might not need it ever. But we've got it, and we've got the teeth in case we do need it.
Yeah. Clarification, the last meeting we left was, uh, some dissension about my letter to the editor. And I, I know you handed it to one person, and I don't know how many people saw it, but I wanted to clarify why I made the statement I did. The, that wasn't the only thing I left out, by the way, there were a couple of things you told me that I was not to repeat, remember? And I haven't. But this thing never came up, and the reason why is? When I got home and got to thinking about our discussion, um, it just didn't make sense to me that I had tried, and this involves Turin too, and I really would say it's stayed. I had tried to get the, I went personally to try to get a plat of Briarwood Commons, and Paulette let me look at it, but she wouldn't give me a copy. And I knew at that point that, that people had copies around, and it was not, you know, it wasn't like you're going to a real estate executive session. It was pretty much general knowledge. And I didn't say anything much about it, 'cause Paulette had always been really prompt about getting things to me when I asked her for them. But I got home and got to thinking about it again, that was Tuesday, so Thursday I went back and said, Paulette, I really would like to have a copy of that. Well, I don't have the authority to give you a copy of that. And I left again. I knew I should be able to get a copy. I'm gonna get Sharpsburg in a minute. And I emailed her, I said, Paulette, this is open records. I should be able to get a copy. And she sent me back a note saying, oh, the, on Thursday she said she didn't have the authority to let me have it. On the email, she said, if I wanted to see that, I would have to get in touch with Dennis, how do you pronounce his last name, is it Drewia?
Drewia.
Drewia. So I emailed Mr. Drewia, tried to get his phone, got, didn't get it, it was, whatever, anyway. And I got a nice polite letter from him saying, thank you, you can't, appreciate getting in touch with me, you can't, but you can have it. He didn't say it that way, he said, I would have to get it from any name where I could get it. So that was four times I tried to get it. Next time I tried to get it was from Donna. And Donna, when I requested it, Donna did send me the zoning amendments, she did send me the two thousand eleven concept, back when they annexed, several years back, two thousand eleven. But she said that, I think her words was, I got the emails, it hadn't been presented to the council. I knew that, 'cause I'd been coming to the meetings.
Hadn't been presented to us.
To the council, yes.
No, not to the council, it had not been presented to us as a formal document that we could even talk about.
But you had the information, and is it private at that point, then?
When you came in here, I had nothing in my office, not even the concept door.
Yeah. And you hadn't, but, Wendell, during the same time I went to the county, and they had discussed it with you?
They had.
Well, you told me it had.
I had been to a meeting, but it was asked that the county administrator called and asked me if I would come to a meeting with the mayor of Turin and county officials and Dennis. and county officials and Dennis. I went up there. In fact, that's where I saw the same thing that he presented the other night. Yes.
Well, anyway, that was about five times I tried to get the information and was unsuccessful in getting it. And then I had heard by the grapevine that the minister had been approached about it over at First Baptist. And so that was hearsay and I didn't believe it. Uh, didn't want to believe, I didn't, I wanted to verify it. And I asked you in the meeting, have you discussed this with the surround, same thing he asked actually, with the surrounding people? And you told me no. But anyway, so I went, made an appointment to go to see the preacher, took the thing, because by that time I had one, and so I could show it to him so he would know what was going on. And he told me that, yes, he didn't, had not seen the plat of the, whatever you call it, but that you had been there discussing a drain field with him.
What I said.
The preacher told me that. So then I had to believe it. So that's why I made the statement, the newspaper I did. That did not look good. And I apologize if it was offensive, but that's how I felt at the time.
Well, we had not discussed with the preacher. I asked to him if church would be interested in selling the back portion of the property in case it ever became necessary, they would donate the property back to the church. And this was not a proposal. This is nothing, this is just something that I asked because, yes, I'm interested in what they do with it, but as far as being anything definite, no, nothing, no offer was made. No reason to make an offer.
Necessary.
But you, uh, this is my time. You can see why I, I, well, maybe you can't see, but after all of that, I was truly wondering what the blankety-blank-blank is going on with this thing. And that's when I added that sentence in the middle of that thing. And that's how I felt at the time.
When they come in here and make application, which could be any day, I will be able to share that information, anybody that asks for it. Right now, they have mine.
Okay.
Anything else?
Uh-uh.
Joe, you have anything else?
Man, um, yeah, I got a lot. I just asked you that question, if you talked to anybody about sewer, septic, drain fields or anything and you said no, and this is coming out.
I'm talking about a piece of land that nobody has made an offer on. I'm thinking outside the box, trying to figure out what they can do as far as making any plans, no.
But your answer to me was no. You've not discussed any of that. And I asked anybody and you, you, you asked for clarification of anybody. I said, anybody in Sharpsburg or property owners? And you said no.
Did not even, did not even enter my mind as to that being a part of that conversation because preacher was in the lobby, preacher was in the office, I was in the lobby walking out the door and I hollered back through the peephole. And that's where that, that was the end of that discussion.
Preacher came down here to see you about what?
About a sign mounted in front of the church. Now, anything else, Joe?
Yes, yes.
Speak to me.
He wants to go home.
Celine?
Um, my neighbors across the street, the Amies, have been complaining about the excessive noise coming from Dollar General in reference to, they presume it has to be dumpsters. They're making huge loud banging noises every morning, very early.
I want to get to it. Anything else?
No.
Keith?
Went to a business meeting in Turin. Last week, I guess.
Two, uh, tomorrow will be two weeks.
Two weeks ago. And, uh, they've spent, or are about to spend a lot of money on the sound system with the digital recorder. And it got me thinking, we've got everything we need except the digital recorder. And I think we should start using our sound system again with our desk mics up here and I, I went online and I found some that I liked and I'll bring them before council makes, or before next time and we can vote on if y'all want to do that. I think we should have a recording of our meetings. We'll have them online and you can download them if you want to hear the meeting you weren't here.
There you go. Yeah, bring it up.
Um, also, spoke with Mark Logan about a security system for the things that are getting ready to happen outside and being able to integrate it in here so that, uh, uh, we, we can have an eye on things that are going on in case there's any, you know, suspicious activities here. We'll have cameras. And, uh, you said he called you and we're gonna meet with him next week?
Uh, just coming Thursday.
This week?
Uh, and that's what I wanted, when you went to meet with him, but I talked with him briefly today, yes.
And one other thing, Ambius, uh, Turin's got nice chairs for their council. I think we ought to come off a wall and buy each one of us a chair that we can sit in up here. It's not a, a metal folding chair.
Special for two-hour meetings.
I'd say, I think we're way too comfortable in the chairs we got now.
What's that?
I said, I think we're way too comfortable in the chairs we got now.
Well, I, of all people, Derek folded a chair up one night, standing up. If that'd been me, y'all had had to got a fort lift in here to get up. As she stood up, it just, just crumpled on me. And, uh, I, I just think we need some better chairs.
Okay.
For our meetings. Other than that, I don't, I don't have any today.
Okay, bring it up and give some prices and bring it before council and see what they say. I had one issue, one of which Keith alluded to earlier. I had a complaint from, uh, somebody about a house on Sunset. Keith and I went over there and nobody would come to the door. But then a couple of days later, first off, I had already tried to call the owner. Could not get the owner to answer at any of the numbers we had. Uh, went down to the owner's house on Neely Road. There was a link chain, a wrought iron fence, couldn't get through. So anyway, the lady, uh, somebody called me and said that those people were at home. I went over there and talked to the gentleman, told him what the violations were and he promised to take care of it. So, uh, if it's not taken care of, we noted the date and the time, so if it's not taken care of in a week, then we'll have to revisit the people. Went to the same meeting in Turin the other night, um, preference to the subdivision. Went to the opening of the new, now at Revitaling Company earlier this week or latter part of last week. It was a sight to behold. I've never seen such recognition in my life, but, uh, it gave us, gave me an opportunity to meet with several of the people that, uh, we had been trying to get in touch with, with the county. Both with the water department and with the tax department. And I'll discuss that after we discuss the issue that you brought up, so I'll tell you about that later. Uh, other than that, I don't have anything to report tonight. Donna has on two weeks vacation and we'll be back, uh, two weeks. Anything else to come before council, a meeting, a motion to adjourn will be in order?
Okay.